Low-density, single-family to Colonial Williamsburg Support, and that is shown in the light blue area on the map. In addition, an amendment is proposed to the text of Chapter Eight in the Comprehensive Plan Neighborhoods and Housing. The proposed change of the forty-six acres shown in blue to Colonial Williamsburg Support removes twenty-one net acres of developable residential land along South England Street, reducing the estimated yield from one-hundred-and-twenty-seven to sixty-four houses. The proposed Colonial Williamsburg Support designation for this area is similar to and consistent with the same designation for the Colonial Williamsburg Nursery on Quarter Path Road, the Colonial Williamsburg Distribution Warehouse on Fifth Avenue, and the Bus Maintenance Facility on Port Hana's Trail. The proposed musket range is consistent with the definition for Colonial Williamsburg Support Land Use, since it is the use that supports the function of the Colonial Williamsburg Historic District. Moving on to the zoning part of the request, again, as part of this proposal, it's proposed to amend the text of the museum support district to add shooting ranges for authentic and/or replica eighteenth-century firearms as a special-use permit use in the museum support district. This is in the same category as many of the existing support district, support facility uses now listed. The third case is a rezoning, and it's proposed to rezone the forty-six acres that are proposed to be redesignated in the Comprehensive Plan to Museum Support District MS. The current zoning is RS-1, the single-family district. The Comprehensive Plan changes support this rezoning amendment. Staff was concerned with the range of uses allowed by right in the museum support district and the fact that this property is now served only by South England Street, a narrow private street in this area. To address this concern, the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation has proffered that the only uses allowed by the rezoning will be shooting ranges for authentic and/or replica eighteenth-century firearms and/or passive open space. These proffered restrictions satisfy staff's return, staff's concerns. The amendment of the Comprehensive Plan, coupled with the zoning changes that I just reviewed, gives the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation the ability to apply for a special-use permit for the proposed musket range. The details of the request of special-use permit will now be reviewed by Deputy Planning Director Carolyn Murphy.
The proposed musket range will consist of an open pole structure for the shooting area, containing six stations, a storage building with a screen, portable toilet, and two parking spaces. This is a picture of what the proposed structure will look like. The Architectural Review Board approved the design of the proposed buildings and structures at their meeting on July the fourteenth. A U-shaped ten-by-twenty-foot berm will extend from the shooting area to behind the target area, and the berm is shown here in green. The musket range area will be enclosed with an eight-foot fence, chain link, and wooden, and the fence will be wooden along South England Street on this side and this side, and chain link on the backside and the backside of the berm. Guests will be transported from the Williamsburg Lodge to the site, while they will be given instructions by certified range officers, one instructor for every two guests. Once fired, the range officer will reload, and the guests will repeat the firing until the end of the educational experience. Eighteenth-century firearms or being considered for use are the brown vests, smoothbore muskets, civilian rifle-bore gun, and the blunderbuss. After completion, guests will be driven back to the Williamsburg Lodge. The proposed hours of operation are daily from nine to four. A noise study was conducted by Acoustical Solutions at four sites shown on this slide. And you can see, Site One was across the street at the golf course; Site Two was at the end of Port Anne; Site Three was at the Oaks; and Site Four was along the Park Service. Three shots were fired at each of the sites, with only one of the twelve rounds exceeding the sixty-five decibel levels, with the loudest shot being sixty-seven at Test Site One, which is the green course golf course across the street from the musket range. The maximum noise level allowed by the city's noise control ordinance is sixty-five decibels from seven to eleven. However, the lawful discharge of firearms is exempt from the city's noise control ordinance. The proposed musket range offers a hands-on experience for guests to not only shoot eighteenth-century weapons, but to learn about the role of eighteenth-century firearms in American life. As a supporting activity, the musket range helps to maintain the unique character and historical importance of the Colonial Williamsburg Historic Area. Planning Commission held a public hearing on July the fifteenth, and one applicant and one citizen spoke at the hearing. Planning Commission recommends to City Council by a vote of four oh-two that the four cases be approved. PCR fifteen dash fourteen, approve proposed ordinance fifteen fifteen to amend the 2013 Comp Plan. PCR fifteen fifteen, approve proposed ordinance fifteen sixteen to amend the museum support district by adding shooting ranges for authentic and/or replica eighteenth-century firearms as a special-use permit. PCR fifteen sixteen, approve proposed ordinance fifteen seventeen to rezone approximately forty-six acres on a portion of six forty South England Street. And PCR fifteen seventeen, approve the special-use permit request to construct a shooting range for authentic and/or replica eighteenth-century firearms at six forty South England Street, contingent upon the operation of this facility being in accordance with the Musket Firing Range Operations Plan dated May the twentieth, 2015. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Reed and I, the representatives from Colonial Williamsburg, are also here and will speak at the public.
Carolyn, thank you. Reed, thank you very much. Let me just comment that the quality of this proposal, both with the staff work that went into it, as well as the work from Colonial Williamsburg, is top-notch. So, thank you all for the hard work that went into this. Let me turn to council for any questions or comments before I open the public meeting.
Mr. Mayor, as an employee of the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation, I will refrain from discussing this matter and abstain from voting on.
Any questions for staff before I open the public?
Go ahead.
We're tradition. Did I show you off?
I'm so used to not talking first. Just to be clear, this is seven days a week.
That's correct.
Okay.
With regard to noise, was there any consideration of measures that could be put in place that would help muffle noise even further, higher berm, or?
There was no, basically, very little berm in the very beginning. So, after that, this is when the berm came in, and the berm is ten feet, basically, on the sides, going down to twenty feet at the rear. So, it was a concern with the police department. So, the foundation took that concern into consideration and ended up doing this berm around the site to help not only with the noise, but to help with the firing of the weapons also, to be safer.
Got you. So, the results of this test were prior to the berm, obviously?
Right.
Okay. So, it would only be less than.
May I follow up on that, sir? You talked about the wooden fence on the, I guess, the east sides. Will that have sound-deadening aspects to it as well?
At current, it's just the wooden fence. The foundation may be able to address that more with their comments. But it's my understanding, it's a wooden fence on this side and this side with the chain link on the back portions.
Okay, thanks.
One of the questions we got from citizens had to do with the fact that the noise study was done in the summer, and the trees have been leaked. And is there any difference in the winter?
I'm not a noise study person, but I would assume that with the leaves off the trees, the noise might be a slight bit more. But being, I actually rode with the foundation to all the four test sites and witnessed the firing of the weapons. And at the Site Number One, which was the golf course, and I think it's maybe hole number nine, I don't play golf, we actually waited until some gentlemen were getting ready to swing and hit the ball, and I actually had them shoot the musket during that, and they didn't even flinch. I mean, they hit the ball and went on about their business. So, I think there might be some difference, but I don't think it would be that much.
Any other questions before I open?
Go back to the previous slide. Those circular sketches there, are those existing trees or proposed trees? What are those?
Those, these are trees. I guess you were talking about these?
Yeah, yeah.
I think they're just showing trees on the site point. They're existing. It's a heavily wooded area.
Got you.
There's a little road that's, you can see there, close to where I put the green sign. So, it's back in that area, and it was further back, and they pulled it up a little bit. One thing that I would note is that the Colonial, the National Park Service received their request, and they're in favor of it. That was one of the initial staff comments.
And any other questions before I open the public hearing? Again, Carolyn, Reed, thank you very much. With that, I'll open the public hearing and ask anyone who wishes to speak to this to please come forward and state your name and address.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hallman, members of council. I'm Ron Kirkman from the Williamsburg Hotel Motel Association. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Topic of guns in our country can sometimes be one of great debate and emotion, and although I may not be an expert on firearms, as a decorated combat veteran, I've fired at and been fired upon by the enemy. I don't say that to be flippant about this issue, but to relate to you that I have a close-up and personal understanding of the seriousness of the topic. As we reviewed Colonial Williamsburg's request to operate a musket range, we took into consideration five things: safety, responsibility, noise, benefit to the community, and benefit to tourism. On safety, we have no doubt that lawyers have gone through this with a fine-tooth comb, and the operations site plans are detailed, thoughtfully presented, and we're very comfortable it to be a safe environment for this type of activity. Responsibility, as we read through the documents, the thing that stood out over and again was that safety is the number-one priority. And when dealing with firearms, there's nothing more responsible than teaching safety and respect. As far as responsibility, CW seems to have the right mindset. Noise, the noise report seems to relegate this as a non-issue. I took a look at some different noise level charts, and for people that are more than a hundred feet away, lawn mowers, vacuum cleaners, and cars are going to make more noise than what this is going to generate. Benefit to the community, anytime Colonial Williamsburg adds a new activity, it's a benefit to the community. If nothing else, local young people and older alike will have the opportunity to learn more about firearms from qualified instructors in a safe and unique environment. This doesn't take into account the potential for additional tax revenue, which helps keep local taxes low and have several. Benefit to tourism, adding more interactive and unique experiences such as the musket range can do nothing but help tourism. In my mind, this is akin to adding a roller coaster or a new museum exhibit. When the tourist has more to do, they want to stay longer. The longer they stay, the more they spend, and the more taxes the city collects. If they have a really good time, they want to come back and bring their friends. And we need more people staying with us longer and more often. After considering these five things, we cannot think of a reason not to support the musket range. Some really nice and good people may have an aversion to guns, and I understand that. For those that feel that way, I'd ask you this: would we rather have our kids and non-gun owning adults sitting in living rooms pretending to shoot people in a video game, or actually teach them firsthand about the history, power, and responsibility of guns in the United States? I can tell you my children are well-trained with a firearm, and they have zero interest in shoot-'em-up games or Warcraft games. And I think it's because they have good understanding of the real thing. I think more people taking part in this opportunity is a good thing, and what better way to do so than through demonstrating how to safely and properly use the very weapons that help bring freedom to these United States? Regardless of personal feelings about guns, I would ask that you support Colonial Williamsburg's request to open and operate a musket range.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kirkman. Next.
Fredericka J. Toita, 511 Newport Avenue, Williamsburg, the city. I'm also editor of publications at the Omaha-Hundry Institute of Early American History and Culture, so I bring an understanding, fair amount, about eighteenth-century history. It's on that basis I would like to speak. The primary rationale offered by Colonial Williamsburg Foundation for the creation of shooting range within the city is an economic one, to address shrinking attendance and its financial impact. The opportunity to fire eighteenth-century firearms is one of CW's initiatives to attract more visitors. While we all recognize the economic pressures from declining tourism in this town, I do not think we should take that as sufficient justification alone for creating an "eighteenth-century musket firing range" experience. Although the CW plan mentions "an immersive education about the role of firearms in eighteenth-century American life," the documentation provided only focuses on instructing guests in the construction and specific uses of an assortment of replica firearms, concluding with the experience of shooting them at a target. As a member of this community, I would like to hear a more thoughtful, in-depth educational plan to accompany the proposal for setting up a target range. How will historical interpreters at CW educate with these shooters by framing the uses of firearms within the historical context of eighteenth-century Virginia? What was the availability of guns? How was their accuracy? How widespread the ownership? What restrictions placed on ownership? Fears of restive white indentured servants, alienated Indians, insurrectionary, or the fear of insurrectionary, enslaved Africans motivated many statutes concerning guns in colonial Virginia. Quote from Henning's statute, "No Negro, mulatto, or Indian whatsoever shall keep or carry any gun, and every such offender shall receive lashes not to exceed thirty-nine on his or her bare back." Embedding firearms in historical circumstances involving not just food and defense, but fear and class and racial violence would give guests truly meaningful insight into shooting a musket. Finally, the idea that shooting each weapon a few times is going to provide guests with "a safe and enjoyable experience" is chilling in the context of this year's events. Safe as an open invitation to deranged individuals to come shoot, not at the markets, but at tourists waiting their turn, enjoyable with the memory of recent killings of people in church and sitting in movie theaters. Instead, could not this initiative be turned to a more serious instructional purpose? Interpreters by immersing visitors in the history surrounding ownership and use of firearms in eighteenth-century Virginia could provide guests with critical tools for thinking about the multiple ramifications of guns in the 21st century. Guns are not fetishes. They do not have the power to aim and shoot on their own. It requires a person to do that. And I hope the CW will prepare guests for handling guns by inculcating a seriousness and respect for these weapons and a due appreciation of the purposes to which they were put in eighteenth-century Virginia. In conclusion, inviting visitors to Williamsburg to shoot eighteenth-century weapons seems to me to be a loaded proposition that requires further reflection from CW leaders and staff and from you, our representatives of this historic city. I believe the reputation, both of the city and Colonial Williamsburg, requires such due consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Toita. Next.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Andrew Langer. I am a Williamsburg resident at 2484 Sanctuary Drive in Williamsburg, Virginia. I'm a relative return to Williamsburg. I was a student at William &amp; Mary. I moved back here a year ago. And in my day job, I run a group out of DC called the Institute for Liberty, which is a group focused generally on federal public policy. And as such, I spend a lot of time talking on the radio to people all around the country. And in the last year, when I told folks that I've moved back to Williamsburg, almost to a person, they get excited, and they ask me about things that are happening in Williamsburg, and I become sort of an informal ambassador for Colonial Williamsburg and the other attractions here to bring people into town. About six weeks ago, I was on an interview, and the host asked me specifically about this proposal, very enthusiastic about this proposal. And I actually, at that point, didn't know about it, and I read up a little bit further, and talked to him about it. And since then, I've had a number of other conversations with talk-radio hosts around the country, who are all very excited about this possibility, and their listeners are very excited about this possibility. I think this is an excellent idea. I think in terms of attracting more and more people, and I want to commend the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation for the efforts that they've made, especially in the last eighteen months, to attract more people to Colonial Williamsburg with a wide range of immersive and educational experiences. This one especially, given the audience that Colonial Williamsburg goes after, the kind of people who come to visit Colonial Williamsburg, this is an added value. Many of them are already familiar with the history of firearms, the use of firearms, restrictions on firearms in colonial times, but want that extra added immersive experience that something like this offers. So, I have I-voice enthusiastic support, and I look forward to hearing your vote. Thank you.
Mr. Langer, thank you very much, and welcome back as a former student. It's nice to see you back in Williamsburg.
Good season.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Robert Underwood. I'm a representative from Colonial Williamsburg. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and council members, over the past decade, Colonial Williamsburg's visitation has declined significantly, impacting the foundation and local businesses in the community. In an effort to reverse this trend, the foundation is implementing new initiatives to draw new guests to the area and improve guest experience and enticing longer stays. Providing unique experiences, attractions that draw guests to Williamsburg are critical to the financial health and well-being of the foundation and our community. This is especially true in today's competitive market for people's vacation time and discretionary income. The eighteenth-century musket range experience is intended to be both an engaging guest attraction and an immersive education about the role of firearms in the eighteenth-century American life, and that is our intent. We will be, it will be a natural extension of two existing offerings in the historic area, the Revolutionary City Reenactment Programs and the trades that are practiced and interpreted at the blacksmith and gunsmith shops. It is critical that Colonial Williamsburg turns around the declining visitation trend by offering new attractions and programming for the sake of the foundation, local businesses, and the community. I ask that you approve the initiative in support of the efforts to increase visitation and to support the impact it will have on the local economy and our community. I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood. Would anyone else wish to address this issue?
My name's Mark Everett. I live in Port Anne. I used to belong to a gun club myself, and I know how far the sound travels on these reports of particularly muskets and shotguns. I live approximately twenty-five hundred, maybe three thousand feet from the site. I can guarantee, I'll be here in it. Now, I don't want to rain on parade here, because I can see everybody, a lot of work putting this thing together. But at the same time, I'm a little worried about what will we run into if it turns out that the sound is actually obtrusive, to the extent that, you know, somebody wants to buy my house, and the guns go off, say, "Well, what the heck was that?" And say, "Oh, it's a firing range over there." Well, they only do it seven days a week. I think, I'm no concerned about the noise. Level's going to be higher than people anticipate. And I'm not concerned about safety, because I think people have done considerable planning on that. I'm not concerned about the economic impact, but I do, I am concerned about the noise and how high that's going to be. So, my question to you all is, what recourse will we have that is, the communities around us, the Oaks and Big Lockdown, Henry Street, and, sorry, England Street, what recourse will we have if this becomes oppressive or annoying to the extent that we feel we should do something?
Thank you very much.
Ms. Mayor, council members, I'm Dean Canavas. I live in Capital Pancake House. First of all, let me apologize for wearing my alma mater in William &amp; Mary's territory. I am a proud graduate, also a graduate school at William &amp; Mary's, so I can't lose when they play football together. Getting back to topic, I have a unique perspective at the Capital Pancake House. I see mainly my customers are locals, but I see a good fare of, a fair share of the visitors I have. And one of the things, when this first came out in the public, in the media, I was talking to a number of my guests, out of town and locals. And one of the things that, over the years, that a lot of us in the restaurant business and the hotel business, we've been pushing for Williamsburg, Colonial Williamsburg in particular, to revamp itself, to make it more exciting. One of the things that we lost years ago was the family. Mom and dad, two kids, and five with a dog. Why don't they come to Williamsburg anymore? They don't come like they used to. The numbers speak for themselves. And I applaud Colonial Williamsburg for taking bold moves to come up with these initiatives. I've heard some other initiatives also are in the works to try to bring the families back. When I go and speak to a family with children at the table, and I tell them about things that are happening, so they know for next time if they ever plan another vacation. One of the things statistics will tell you is, the mother typically makes a decision where the kids, or where the family's going to vacation. One of the biggest problems, I think, we've had is, children today, as those of you who have younger children, I've got two, one in freshman college, just finished his freshman year, one that's just graduated college last year, and one of the things that I've realized when they were going through high school is, everyone is fighting for that competitive edge. Children today don't get out of school in May or June and have the summer off anymore. They are working all the way through summer. They have a reading list they've got to complete before the start of school session in the end of August or first of September. They've got all kinds of different types of work with AP classes that are going to be taken or have taken that they've got to complete, or tests they've got to take. So, children are working even through the summer. One of the things that, if you read some of the studies, mothers who make majority decisions with the family vacation, talk about is, when they go on vacation, they want to be on vacation. And although it's a plus to learn the historical significance of Colonial Williamsburg, they also want to make, have a chance where the children have fun. Again, when I walk up to the table, to just give you my own perspective, my unique perspective, when I mention this shooting range of muskets, of course, these are children now that are walking to my restaurants, and occasionally we sell, depending on when we restock, the tricorder hats. We used to sell small little muskets, that little poppers. Sometimes they do it in the dining room that aggravates everybody, but they're a big seller. But when you talk to these families, the young children, that the possibility of having a musket range nearby, where Colonial Williamsburg would be showing them not only the historical significance of firearms in the era, but also the chance of being able to fire one, their eyes light up. Again, we want to go after those families to bring them back. Those are the ones that made Williamsburg what it was. Those are the ones that had the numbers in terms of attendance up to where they should be, and those are the ones we want to get back. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Yes.
My name is Neil Elwine. I'm with Colonial Williamsburg Foundation. I wanted to provide a little bit of information about the sound and the sound test that we did, and it might be helpful if we could put the one slide up that had the four test Thank you, Carolyn. So, the data that we had, Acoustical Solutions out of Richmond, Virginia, was our consultant that did our work for us on this, and I think many of us have copies of the report that they did, but I just wanted to kind of summarize the key points. The closest site from the shooting location was Test Site Number One, and that was the green course number nine, T-Box. And that location was five hundred feet. And that location was 500 feet, approximately 500 feet. The distances that I'm talking about, I got actually off of the City of Williamsburg's copy information system, which provides a really nice tool. You can take as the crow flies, if you will, and draw a line between two points, and it tells you the distance. And that's where these distances came from. So that 500 feet was where we measured 67 decibels on the day that we took the readings in June. As Carolyn said, you know, this was a kind of a lipmus test, if you will, and we had golfers coming around. We had an important golf event that morning, and as the folks approached the tee box and got up there on their backswings and et cetera, for you golfers, you all know how quiet everyone is when there's somebody on the tee box. And, you know, I wanted the little radio telling the guy to shoot the musket. And to my surprise, actually, when the musket fired, nobody in the foursome flinched, nobody in the foursome even, you know, turned to look. I mean, it was, it was a quite muted sound. 67 decibels isn't really that loud. The next location, the next closest location would be test site four. That location along the parkway was about 1,000 feet from the shooting site. 1,080 is actually what it came off to. That sound level was 60 decibels there. We had the sound consultant, we had to wait a lot because there was traffic that, at that time, and of course, the traffic noise was higher than, we had to get background noise down so that we could measure the noise of the musket going off, if you will. So it took some time at that site, waiting until it was quiet enough to say, shoot the musket, and then we recorded 60 decibels. The next closest location was the Oaks subdivision, and we went to the, to the end of the subdivision, closest to the test site. I was coming up with 1,820 feet from the shooting site to that location. There too, well, there it was nice and quiet, there wasn't much going on, there wasn't anybody home that time of day, so it was a quiet setting. We recorded 46 decibels. 46 decibels, you know, you would really have to pay attention in order to hear that the shock went off. At 46 decibels, you know, you've got noises around you, birds chirping this, that, and the other, and 46 decibels is a very low level. And then our farthest site was over at test site two, which is in the Coles subdivision. And I picked what I thought would be the next closest subdivision to the test shooting site. That one actually came in at about 3,900 feet from the shooting location to that test site. And we had, with, you know, cell phones, we shot probably three, four, or five times. We just simply couldn't hear it, it was inaudible. The meter wouldn't pick it up, and neither would the human ear. Since doing this test, I did go back to the consultants and say, "Well, what would be the effect of constructing the berm around the shooting site?" And they came back with the calculation that the nearest site, which is the golf course location, should experience a six-decibel reduction due to the 10-foot berm around the sides of the shooting site principally. And so that would take us from 67 down to an estimated 61 decibels. So, you know, I hope that helps to give a little more insight to it. The question raised about the wintertime, summertime foliage on the tree question, the consultants couldn't really give a specific answer on that because there hasn't been really any specific studies done, as he understood it, on that kind of thing. He did make the comment, if you, if you cleared the woods entirely between the shooting location and the green course number nine tee box, that 500-foot distance, he suggested that if that was a clear opening, it would increase the decibel level by five decibels. So, but considering that we're not doing that, he said, "The thing of it is, even when trees lose their leaves, there's still a lot of tree, there's still a lot of interference in there. You have a lot of standing trees, trunks, et cetera, vines, and et cetera." So there's, there's no real clear-cut answer on that. But I think, I feel very good about the data that we got, that the neighborhoods won't feel any impact.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I have a question. I'm in James City County.
No, I'm sorry. Could you please come to the podium and state your name and address?
I'm Lynn Zeller. I live in James City County in Kingsmill. Do I have a right to say anything here?
Of course.
Okay. First of all, was the test done with just one musket at a time? Because if there are multiple guns being shot at one time, then that's another noise level. I live on, in Wareham's Point in Kingsmill, and so I am close to the factory at Anheuser-Busch, and I love to have fresh air in my winters open. I can tell you that I can hear the factory much more in the winter than I can in the summer, probably a third to a fourth as much noise level increase. So I think foliage does have something to do with the noise level. And also for the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation, I'm also an ex-mortgage banker, so I'm always thinking about that residential tax revenue for housing. Has anyone done a study as to the cost that Colonial Williamsburg, if the foundation is going to have as an outlay, versus how many guests do we need to pay for our payback to investment for this new endeavor? I can't say that I'm for it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to address this issue? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and come back to council for discussion and action.
Question for Chris, and maybe for staff as well. Assuming we approve this and everything goes well for a while, it later becomes a nuisance to certain residents, what recourse do we have, other than Colonial Williamsburg's goodwill?
If you want to include conditions in the special use permit, you can do that. They need to be reasonable conditions regarding the use of the property.
But may I interrupt? Could those conditions be an annual or biannual report on noise back to city? And if we found a problem, once the special use permit is offered, is there a way to take it back? I guess, I don't, I don't know what.
You can make the special use permit for a period of time.
Time, okay.
That would be my suggestion.
Yeah. So, so we might make it for two years or four years, some time period, and then, then at that point, we would have some real experience and be able to judge.
Yes.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Scott?
You can come back to me if I have something else.
Okay.
I guess a question from maybe one of CW staff members about the amount of load that goes into the blackpowdered gun. Is that an adjustable amount, and does that have any effect on noise?
It actually does, and we have done different trials, and we are looking at reducing the charges in the, in the weapon itself.
Which is, my comment would be, you know, I think we keep talking about history being boring and it's being harder to sell Williamsburg because of that, and I would only be repeating what some people have already said, but finding new ways to be interactive, to, to let the visitors experience hands-on, you know, this aspect of history, I think, is beneficial both to the visitor, to Colonial Williamsburg, and just future generations. You know, it's, it's, it's that tangible aspect of vacation that I think people look for, and that we have struggled to present in the area. And I think Colonial Williamsburg has come a long way in trying to make it more interactive. You know, what better way to get, you know, kids and families to put down their cellphones for a period of time and, and touch history and be a part of it? And so if there is an increase in visitation, then we're all the beneficiaries of that. You know, and I've asked many questions of Colonial Williamsburg over the years, but I don't think I've ever had a question or questioned their ability to represent history accurately, professionally. I've always had great confidence that they, they can do that, and I think that that's what's going to happen with this musket range as well. You know, I'd be open-minded to some, some review dates if, if the majority of council wants to do that. But with that said, I'm also very confident that as, as this evolves, Colonial Williamsburg will be very responsive to, you know, how much, what's the grain load in the muskets to help dampen noise? Could they put, you know, an additional ivy fence up and help dampen noise? I think, I think they'll go through those, those iterations to help make sure that it's as non-offensive as it, as it can be, given the sensitivities to it. So I'm looking forward to supporting this.
Judy?
I'm also looking forward to supporting it. And originally, I had written down two objections that people have brought up. The third one now is the change in the zoning from residential. And I, two things about that, for the most part, if you run the numbers, houses cost jurisdiction money. They don't bring in, they cost more in services than they bring in in tax revenue. And so that, that, I'm not in favor of a whole lot more residential use around Colonial Williamsburg. I also like the idea of, of more trees around Colonial Williamsburg, more open space around Colonial Williamsburg. So I don't think that the land use, that's not an issue for me. The other issue was noise, and I think that's been well answered. The noise, the noise problem seems to be under control. The third issue then is guns. And one of my observations over the course of the arguments in this country about gun control are what I see is a real misunderstanding of the Second Amendment to the Constitution. And one of Colonial Williamsburg's real strengths is being able to talk about what the founders said and put it in context. So maybe we can work on a, I agree with the speaker who talked about the need for more education. We need to work on an understanding of what the founders meant with the Second Amendment, and maybe we could have a little conversation about what a well-regulated militia really is and how it should function. So I am going, I'm in favor of this change, this ordinance, whatever it is we're doing, these ordinances.
Multiple ordinance.
Yeah, right.
Let me, go ahead, Scott.
So I live at 524 South Angleton, so I'm not the closest person by any means, but I'm still in the neighborhood. I think it was my second year of law school, Colonial Williamsburg was doing their annual hunt, deer control hunt. And I was getting out of the car and walking into the house, and I assumed that they were in this area, in areas beyond 199, and it had to have been shotguns because that's all that's allowed. Very faint pops, and that's in a totally uncontrolled area with, you know, no berms, no directional controls. So it's anecdotal experience at best, but it wasn't, I mean, it wasn't at all alarming. I was not, I was not surprised in any way. Also, I walk this street at least once a week down to the Dead End, and seen a sign there for some time. You know, this, this doesn't go without a lot of thought. Also, to add to Doug's point, you know, I don't typically like to approve things without knowing all the details. But I've never seen anything from Colonial Williamsburg as far as the programming goes to say that it's not top quality and truly representative of the experience. And I see this as an opportunity, as Judy pointed out, to really interpret American history in a way that is relevant to today's world. As a, as like a fourth and fifth grader, spent a lot of time at 4H camp, shooting, it wasn't 18th century, but it was kind of more modern muzzle loading rifles. So that was impressive as a, as a young person, so I can appreciate that experience on today's business.
I guess I'd like to follow up on both Judy and Scott. In fact, I agree with the comments about the educational mission of Colonial Williamsburg and the quality of what they do. I think it would be helpful if, if the foundation would be willing to share, as, as this develops, to share with the city and, and more importantly, with the community, how they, they envision sort of the educational part of this going on. I think Ms. Toita's comments were important and thoughtful about the, the potential here to really create an educational experience that is both fun and educational at the same time. So I, I hope that the foundation, as we go forward, will do that. I also, thanks to Ms. Shelton, would favor, when we get to the special use permit, of doing that for a specified period of time, say, three years, because that would give us time to experience this, to see about noise levels, to see about the educational program that goes with it, and then to reevaluate it after some, some experience with it. And I think from a, the standpoint of the city, that's probably a wise direction to go.
Mr. Mayor, can I speak for a minute?
Yes.
This is a significant investment for Colonial Williamsburg, and to put a timeframe on it would actually impact our return on investment. And for us to have a restriction would be a consideration if we move forward with this, with this initiative.
I fully, fully understand that, but it also would be, mean, at the end of that period, you could reapply for the special use permit, and we could consider it in light of the experience. And my sense is the experience will be such that a future city council would want to renew that special use permit. But I understand.
It would have an impact.
I fully understand your concern. Thank you. And, and I'm speaking for myself, not for council on this, so we'll have to wait till we get to the motions. Any, any further comments?
There's another question for Chris. We can limit the length of time the special use permit is, is, is good. And that, at that point, they would have to reapply. Is, I mean, I don't particularly want to make them go back through a reapplication process. It would be nice if, in a year, we could have a, some sort of conversation. What, what can we build in here that allows you to run that?
If council wanted to do something other than limiting the timeframe, council could put a restriction on it that if, that staff could evaluate the, could evaluate the special use permit in a year to determine if it constitutes a nuisance. My concern about doing that is, is how do we measure that? You can put a condition in the special use permit for them to come back in a year and report to you. That, that starts to get out of the actual use of the property, so that is my concern about that.
Yeah, I think, and I'm not, I'm thinking about sort of a length of time, would it make sense or not? But certainly, it doesn't seem to me, in my experience and your advice of working with special use permits over the, over the past 15 years, that there are a lot of options for us to.
Well, it's effectively a zoning category.
Yes, exactly.
Once you've granted it, you've granted it. So if you want to limit it, the best way to do that is limit it for a period of time. When you start having to get into measures, then it becomes a factual determination.
I, I don't really think we should do that. I don't think we ought to put a limit on it. I think if it does become, you know, if there's a lot of noise in Port Ann or something, it seems to me we have other things, other ways.
Other, yeah.
Yeah, as opposed to limiting the special.
My, my experience with Colonial Williamsburg is that they have been very responsive to the community.
Right.
So if, if issues come up, given their past experience, or past experience with that, I would assume they, they would modify and make adjustments and, and address that. So I'll, I'll pull back.
Mr. Mayor, another alternative that the city manager just suggested to me that I think might work is that you grant the special use permit on condition that the decibel readings at a certain point do not exceed X amount. So say, for example, at 1,000 feet, it never exceeds 65-decibel levels, and that's a condition of zoning. Again, if they violate that condition, then they have to take steps to correct that zoning violation. That may be one way to, to do what you're trying to do without imposing a time limit.
May I ask a question about that?
I kind of like that. I mean, I think we all have, I'm guessing there's a sense of liking what we've seen based on this information, and the decibel levels are within those parameters. And so I think if they, to Ms. Shelton's point, if they go over, then, then we might have more cause for concern, and so that could be tested down the road.
And that would be a condition of the special use permit?
That would be a condition of the special That would be a condition of the special use permit. And of course, if they violate that, they're in violation of the zoning limits.
Judy does that. Scott does that.
Yeah, just so long as we're, we have some good information when we pick a decibel there.
Yeah.
Well, I think, again, our noise ordinance provides a decibel level. It seems to me to be something we should defer to.
Already meeting, already meeting.
Yes, exactly. And so that, having, having that, you know, then it doesn't violate the noise ordinance, and maybe Ms. Shelton can help us with. We're talking about sort of, if we did that, say at 1,000 feet, a particular decibel level, would you recommend the decibel level that's in our noise ordinance that's not exceeding that?
Well, the, there is an exception in the noise ordinance for the legal discharge of firearms. This would effectively reimpose that at a certain distance, but it would be a zoning violation as opposed to a noise ordinance violation.
But I guess my, we could pick any decibel level, but it would be arbitrary to do anything. To me, it seems arbitrary except to pick what we, in our ordinance, say is an acceptable noise level.
I think you're, you're probably correct.
Okay. Okay, any further?
And I think that you may want to ask Ms. Murphy a question regarding the distance, if she knows it, or if Mr. Nestor knows it, between the firing range and the residential properties, so you make sure that that measurement is shorter than that distance.
Yes. So do, back to the test sites, what were the distances to, seems to me, Test Site One was?
That was 500 feet.
Yeah, do you have those distances?
Yes, for, Test Site One was 500 feet. Test Site Four was 1,080 feet.
So 1,000 feet would put us with a circle to Test Site Four.
Yeah.
It's reasonable to me.
Yeah.
Okay, and I believe we could do the first three of the three zonings as one motion, and then the special use permit as a second motion with, with the stipulation that.
With the additional condition.
Condition that at 1,000 feet, not exceed, what is the noise ordinance? 65?
65.
Decibels. So Foster, would you like to make a comment?
Do I need, do I need to have that specific language in the?
Well, if we do the first three.
I'll do the first three, then we'll figure out.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve pos ordinance 15-15, 15-16, and 15-17.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Walton?
Ms. Newton.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fryland.
Abstain.
Mr. Foster.
Aye. I can't get my, I can't get my.
I think you just proposed to.
I can do it. I got it. Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the request of the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation for a special use permit to construct a shooting range for authentic and/or replica 18th century firearms at 640 South England Street, as recommended by the planning commission. I also move that they cannot exceed 65 decibels at 1,000 feet. Does that do it for you?
As a condition of special use.
As a condition of special use permit.
I move to approve as amended. I move to approve as amended.
So we have a motion and a second. Do we have a second?
Oh, you're making the second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Gary?
Ms. Newton.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fryland.
Abstain.
Mr. Foster.
Aye. I want to thank everyone who participated in the open, in the public hearing today. This was a very good process, and we really appreciate your attention to this, and we look forward to a very successful operation from Colonial Williamsburg. So thank you very much. Our next order of business today are reports, first monthly financial statements. Mr. Collins, anything in particular?
They're submitted for your review and staff's available if you have any questions. I would point out, as is tradition, that we're four months running with the hotel and meal tax, the room tax and meal tax, both showing an increase. That's four months straight.
Any questions on the financial statements? Not monthly department operating reports. Anything in particular?
Where available, if you have questions.
Anybody have any questions on that? City manager reports, we have three today. The first is a fire department rescue pumper replacement. Chief. Barbara Chief, then. Thank you.
Mayor Holman, members of city council, as you know, the city's 2015, 2016 goals, initiatives, and outcomes, and the vehicle replacement plan call for purchase of a new rescue pumper to replace the existing Squad 10. The Squad 10 is a 1994 Sutford Rescue Pumper, as you see pictured here. The new squad will be a 2016 Pierce Velocity Rescue Pumper. We took, there were several factors that were considered in looking at replacing this piece of apparatus. One of the things first and foremost is 21 years of age. The National Fire Protection Association recommends that any apparatus 15 years of age or older be moved to a reserve status, and at 20 years or older, it be removed from the fleet. So we're trying to follow that NFPA recommendation. Also, another thing that was taken into consideration was our personnel safety. This may be a little difficult to see, but this is the cab of our current squad. As you can see, this is, this is the step to get in the squad, and this vehicle has limited space in the cab for the officer's position and for the driver's position. This was customary for the 1994 era. Also, you'll see the jump seat, this is the door to enter the jump seat behind the driver. There is another seat to fold down here for, for another firefighter, so you can see the limited capacity that they have. And also, that was common in that era was, this is where the engine was mounted, so it's a really, really limited space for firefighters to ride, and the way the SCBA is mounted is right in the center of their back piece. Now, in new apparatus, that SCBA is recessed in the seat, excuse me. Also, with the new apparatus, there's additional space in the cab and the jump seat for the driver and for the riders. They also provide now a front impact and side impact protection for everyone on the apparatus. It also has an electronic stability control, and what that does, it gauges a threshold where there might be a spinout, or there might be a rollover of that piece of apparatus, and it automatically applies the brakes and automatically reduces the RPM. So it's another built-in safety measure for personnel on the apparatus. One of the issues we've had with this piece of apparatus is, over the years, the necessary equipment that we need to carry for different types of incidents has increased. So as you can see, this is just one compartment on this piece of apparatus. We have limited space. We, actually, personnel at the fire station had to go in and make some brackets here to carry struts for vehicle stabilization. As you can see, the cord reel up here, those struts actually go behind the cord reel. This piece of apparatus was just really designed with a lot of limited space. Again, here, some creative storage, again, additional struts added to this vehicle over the years, and this is actually the inside of one of the compartment doors where we went in and made some alterations to store the additional equipment that we were required to carry. Couple other things that we took into consideration, some obsolete components. Also, we're concerned about, at, over a period of time, 21 years, that the chassis is beginning to weaken, structural stability is weakening, weakening because of the amount of equipment that we carry and the weight of that equipment. Also, with some of the major components, we're concerned about expense there. A couple of years ago, we've already had to replace a pump shaft in this piece of apparatus, which was an expensive repair. And also, the availability of the parts, the parts are becoming limited, so when we do, when we do have an issue, it increases our downtime for this piece of apparatus. This is a similar chassis. I was fortunate to find a white one, so it doesn't have our striping, but this is the chassis. This is very similar to what we're proposing for purchase, again, is the 2016 Pierce Velocity Rescue Pumper. And what differentiates this pumper from a standard pumper is some, all that additional equipment that we've talked about, and we carry that for response to incidents such as vehicle accidents, construction accidents, structural collapses. So we have all that extra equipment to carry with us. Some of that additional equipment, this is our Hamatro hydraulic tools, whether we're working on a vehicle, it could be, again, it could be in some type of collapse situation, so we carry this type of equipment. We also carry stabilizers, the struts I showed earlier for vehicle stabilization. Again, that can also be if we're in a, in a construction site or a building collapsed, you may have to shore certain portions of the building to make a rescue for a victim. Also, airbags, we carry these airbags. If we had a situation where a vehicle was on top of another vehicle, or unfortunately, if it was on top of a person, we have the ability to, we carry different sized airbags. We have the ability to raise that vehicle to remove off of another vehicle or remove that person from the vehicle. Another big key for us with this piece of, this rescue pumper, this is an SCBA fill station, and what that, that fill station gives us the flexibility of filling our breathing air cylinders at the scene of an incident, which we don't have any other way. We carry some extra cylinders, but if we went beyond those extra cylinders, we would need this system here to refill cylinders so we could continue to work. So as you can see, that takes up some, a good portion of one compartment there, just to have that SCBA fill station. This new rescue pumper was proposed to be purchased under a cooperative purchase contract through the city of Suffolk, Virginia. Staff did a lot of work in researching what was the best fit for Williamsburg, and they determined the bid awarded to Atlantic Emergency Solutions was competitive, and we worked with Atlantic to make changes in the specifications that fit Williamsburg's needs, and that's for a contract price of $723,392. That price also reflects a $27,076 discount for a 90% prepayment at the time of order, which we've, when we purchased the engine in 2010, that was the first time we did the 90% prepayment, but it's worked out really well for us by receiving that discount. Also, Pierce Manufacturing, Atlantic Emergency Solutions will provide training to all of our personnel. Atlantic Emergency Solutions also opened a full-service maintenance facility in York County, which gives us quick access to service if we need it, and they also have mobile technicians that are able to come out on site if we require repairs on site. Another cost that you saw associated with this purchase, this equipment here is our current extrication equipment. This equipment that we have on the unit now was purchased at the same time the engine was purchased, in 1994. So this was a 2000 series, they called, Hamatro called it their 2000 series, they're now up to a 5000 series. And what, the reason they continue to change, obviously, they want you to buy the newer equipment, but one of the things that's really driven this is the auto manufacturing processes have increased the amount of high-strength metal alloys and composite materials that they use. So it's become difficult for that, more difficult for that 2000 series cutter and spreader that we have to actually bend or move or cut these, this material that's being used in the vehicles now. As indicated in your memo, the cost of this equipment is $43,376. That includes the cutter, the spreader, the power unit, all the hoses that go with it. With that, we were able to secure a grant through the Rescue Squad Assistance Fund that will pay for 50% of this purchase. So that brings the total cost of the rescue pumper to $745,080. The funding for this pumper was budgeted in the city's vehicle replacement plan for 2016 at $750,000. If approved, the current Squad 10 will be removed from service, and it'll either be traded in or sold at fair market value, whichever brings the most return to the city. We've already had, through some, we've had sold one outright before, and we've had some of those smaller organizations requesting to know a price on it, but obviously, we didn't move forward until we have approval to move forward with a new purchase. And the reason I stand before you today with this purchase is, from the time of order, it takes approximately 270 to 300 days for delivery in this piece of apparatus, which puts us another year, almost another year into the current Squad 10 that we have, so we would be at 22 years of age with the current Squad 10 that we have. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Chief Dent, thank you very much. That's a very thorough presentation. Let me turn to council for any questions.
Chief Dent, when you buy a vehicle, it's a good one. It hasn't been that long since you were up here before and seeking another replacement. This is a lot of money. I mean, it's a significant expense. But when you think about the people who use this equipment every day, the professional firefighters, volunteer firefighters, and the people of this community that they're serving, and the needs of any one individual at that time, when a few seconds, or a minute, or two minutes, or that extra canister of air, or the ability to, you know, cut through a car a little more quickly than you could with the old equipment, can save somebody's life. I don't think anybody's going to argue that we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be providing the best possible equipment that we can afford. Now that said, is there any functionality in this velocity pumper, or in the spreader or cutter that you feel you wanted, but we couldn't afford?
No, sir. We, we ask, we, there's, we have a committee that did a lot of research on, on all of the equipment, the pumper, and you bring up a good point. It wasn't that long ago that we purchased the new pumper, but to keep that rotation and try to extend the life of what we have now, that's another important reason that we need to move, we're asking to move forward with this. But there was, there was not anything that, fortunately, with the, you know, we might have been outside of our $750,000 if we, if we didn't obtain the 50% funding for the other equipment, but with that, we're, we have not, we have not cut our specifications short, our equipment short, based on the amount of funding that we have.
And one other point that's worth keeping in mind is, this piece of equipment is not only going to serve just the citizens of Williamsburg, but with our mutual aid agreements, we're responding in York County, we're responding in James City County, just as they're helping us out when that's necessary. And I think to, to keep up the quality of equipment throughout the three jurisdictions is particularly important, and I think a good show of faith to the other jurisdictions. I'm a little concerned, though, when you talk about either using it as a trade-in or selling it. You cited the fact that it should be, according to the National Fire Protection Association, it should go to reserve at 15 years or be retired at 20, and we're thinking about selling it to somebody else who's going to use it at 22 years?
Yes, sir, and that's, well, we offer that. As you know, there's a large portion of the state of Virginia that is still volunteer contingent, and they may, their localities may, may not have the funding to purchase new apparatus, so they often look to purchase used apparatus, not just to add to their fleet, but sometimes it may be to add a reserve piece to their fleet, just so they have additional equipment. We, the last piece we sold to a volunteer organization, the first two days they had it in service, they did some, a little bit of refurb to it, painted it for their, for their colors and striping, and the first two days it was in service, they fought two structure fires with it, which was very, very uncommon for them. So a lot of those jurisdictions don't respond to the number of calls that we respond to. And as, you know, if we follow every NFPA standard that's out there, it's extremely expensive to follow every standard out there, so not every organization can follow every standard or recommendation from NFPA.
So when we make the decision about the trade-in or the sale, is it purely economical, or do we take into consideration, if we're within a certain ballpark, and there's a community that can really use a piece of equipment like this, we would go that direction as opposed to trading it back into the manufacturer?
Yes, sir. Obviously, the manufacturer, some, you know, the price, and what they do a lot is they have a specific dealer that they work with, and they take it on trade-in, and then that dealer ends up selling it and making it, making some money off of it, so maybe the same volunteer organization that we were going to sell it to.
And this is, I guess, a question for the city manager. When we, if we, if we get a greater trade-in, we obviously spend less, so we, not as much money comes out of the capital fund. If we sell a piece of equipment like this after the fact, that money just goes back into the capital fund?
Either way, they get to this, you know, get to the same place. Trade-in value reduces the value, means we spend less, the money remains there. The other way, it comes back, it goes there as well. It's general fund.
There's one more question. Scott?
22 years, pretty.
22 years, pretty good life for something that gets used every day, multiple times a day, and that we really depend on. It's, you know, $750,000 is never taken lightly, but let's hope we have as good a luck out of this one.
And I think it's a testament to how we take care of our equipment. The, the staff takes very care of the equipment, and, and I certainly wouldn't be standing before you today if, if I didn't feel it was needed, and I realize the amount of money that it is.
If I may also, a question regarding one recently being purchased. It's very common right now for jurisdictions across the country to have deferred large capital purchases like this coming through the recession, and now as economies and funding starts to recover, you'll see more and more jurisdictions prioritize their capital needs, and, and you'll see public safety needs obviously coming, coming to the forefront, so you'll, you'll see more of these purchases. At the same time, those, those volunteer and smaller departments have, have deferred their expenses, and, and some of those lag behind in, in economic ability, so providing still relevant usable equipment for their purchases is meaningful as well.
Thanks.
I don't want any questions.
You neither. Thank you, Chief Dent. That was a very, very good presentation. Any further comments? If not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm with the city council, authorize the city manager to purchase a new replacement rescue pumper, spreader, and cutter extraction tool for a total purchase price of $745,080.
Second. Have a motion, a second. Jerry, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Newtonson. Mr. Pons. Mayor Holman. Vice Mayor Frye. Mr. Pons.
Our next city manager report is acceptance of primary extension paving funds. This is proposed resolution 15-10. Dan, welcome.
Thank you. Mayor, city council. Last month, I mentioned that we had received word that we had, were approved for some VDOT paving funds, and I'll be back this month to, for you folks to hopefully take action. This is a new funding program. It's called the Primary Extension Paving Funds. It allows localities to apply for funding of primary roads that are located in the, in the locality. These are the roads that are typically the, carry state route numbers, for example, are Route 60, or Route 143, 132. We were approved for $607,000, which will pave Richmond Road from High Street to the corporate limits, distance of about a mile and a half. This will be paid 100% from VDOT, no, no local match or any contribution from the city at all, and just, VDOT requires a resolution from the governing body accepting the allocation and granting authority to the city manager to execute any documents necessary to facilitate the program. This work will take place in the spring, early summer, in conjunction with our normal annual paving program. So you have before you resolution number 1512 for action.
Dan, thank you, and you, you talked about this earlier. Any, any questions on this?
Dan, was this portion of Richmond Road on the, in our CIP to do in the next five years?
Yes, this, we paved this last in 2003, so it's been over the years.
And so we've been allocating funds to do that, so that clearly, these will free up funds.
Yes, we also, also have some revenue sharing money coming in next year for paving, so we're actually going to be spending $500,000 city money, $500,000 of revenue sharing money, and then the $600,000, so we'll have a big, a big paving year next year.
So this may, may provide opportunities to do some of the other areas that, that are further down the road that really need it.
We're making up our list for next year right now. We're getting it together.
Thank you. Anything else? If not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm with the council, approve resolution 15-10 to accept the funds and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents relative to carrying out the primary extension paving program.
Second. Have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Jerry?
Mr. Newtonson. Mr. Pons. Mayor Holman. Vice Mayor Frye. Mr. Pons.
Next is the Tourism Promotion Contingency Funding Process. This is a process we've talked about for a variety of times, and I think have reached a conclusion about the process. Jody, are you going to do this? Jody?
Good afternoon, mayor, members of city council. As the mayor mentioned at the July meeting, council requested that staff propose a process and criteria for reviewing and evaluating funding requests for the city's tourism promotion contingency. This fund was created in FY15 to provide one-time funding for projects and activities which drive repeat overnight visitation to the city. To date, seven requests have been funded. The following process is recommended to review and evaluate requests when received by the city. First, looking at your memo, first step would be that the request should be submitted in writing to the city manager's office for initial review. In, in the request, information providing details on the project or activity and how it van, it advances the city's goal to drive overnight visitation will be reviewed. A second, part of the process would be staff committee review. We would take a look at the request and provide a recommendation for city council's consideration. The recommendation from staff would be based on the following proposed criteria. First, is this a new project or activity, or does it add something new to an existing project or activity? Does the project or activity drive overnight visitation? What is the possible return on investment on the project or activity? Does it complement or add to existing tourism products or activities currently in the city? Is the applicant willing to provide marketing information, attendance data, and return on investment data at the conclusion of the activity or project, and will the city be listed as a sponsor of the project or activity? City council will review the request and the staff recommendation at the next monthly council meeting, and at that point, will make a funding decision based on the information provided. Finally, once a decision is made, staff will notify applicants of the decision and ensure that any follow-up actions need to take place, including any required reporting happens. So this information has been provided to you today for further discussion and consideration.
Thank, thank you, Jody. Thank you for all your work on this as well. Any comments, questions, Paul?
I have a question. Ms. Miller, I guess I should have realized this before, but it's, for some reason, this is the first time it struck me, that the Tourism Promotion Contingency Fund is one-time funding, so that once we've provided a grant or some level of assistance to a particular organization, I would assume for a particular discrete project, that, that project then is no longer eligible for funding.
The way it's designed right now, yes.
But that doesn't mean that if there's an organization that does one thing and it's successful, and then they come back and they want to do something completely different, we could still apply for that.
Right. Same organization, but different activities.
Or they might try to expand what they did, and that would still be eligible.
Yes. That starts to get into a gray area, because, and the reason I say that is, everybody wants to expand their event. If you say, we're going to try to draw 500 people this year, and next year, we want to draw 700 people.
Yeah, but it, yeah, the wording says add something new to an existing, so, so, no, and, and I think that's where we rely on staff to make a recommendation. Is this really new, when you, what is?
Right, but it doesn't say that where it says provide one-time funding.
Well, the...
I mean, it's, it's explicit in the front where it says created in fiscal year 15. I'm, I'm reading in the definition what we're talking about on the process. It says one-time funding. So I want to understand what the parameters.
I think that, that one-time refers to the fact that we set aside the $250,000 one-time to do that. That doesn't mean one-time for...
Okay, well, that was my question, Dan. So it, it doesn't mean that.
But, but also, I don't think the expectation is we continue to fund the same activity year after year after year. If the, if organization wanted to come and have an activity or project funded, they would need to show us how it was different, how it added something new or unique that really drove overnight visitation. An example of this would be the Arts Festival that recently we approved, that they're, they're adding additional days to that, they're bringing in high, high-quality national performances, those types of things, rose to the level of being new, different, adding to an existing.
It's a, a policy issue for discussion. Grants programs can be based either or, or and. I've, I've seen grant funding set up for special events that are done in the annual budget process. They can be for ongoing operating expenses on demonstrated economic impacts within the community. I've, I've also seen it where you set it up much like this was intended, to, to be a one-time to, to grow and expand, but not to be a sustainable operation, but that it's for expanding and growing the pie within the city.
And, and that's the point I'm trying to understand, because if, if, are we saying that if you get funding, and I'm not arguing one with the other, I'm just trying to understand so the applicant understands, because you want, you want, when we have a process like this, the most important thing is everybody understands how, the level of the playing field. So if, and if, I'm looking at us, is this our intention that if somebody creates a festival, and I don't want to pick one in particular because it sounds like I'm singling somebody out, let's say that they create a Valentine's Day festival to bring people in February, and that's new, so that's eligible, and the next year, they want to have a longer Valentine's Day festival that goes an entire weekend, then that's bigger, so they can come back and request the funding again.
They could, that, that doesn't mean they'll receive it.
And the next year, they want, they want to grow that two-day festival from 300 people to 500 people. You know, do you see where I'm going?
Yeah, but I, I think that's, that's a discretion that I would like council to have, rather than in, in the, in the, in the criteria say, no, you, you can't do that, because if somebody does something that's very successful, and then they come back and say, this was successful, but we think we can even be more successful by adding this, then I would like to be able to consider that. If we just make your one-time blank, then you couldn't consider that.
But you, you can consider that if it gets to you. I'm sorry, consider what?
If it get, well, but it's only going to get to us if we say for a new or an expansion of an existing.
I mean, Paul, an expansion of your Valentine thing could be adding a concert. You know, it was, it was one day they did something, and the next year, they want to add a concert, so that's...
So all I'm saying is, we're leaving it very wide open.
Yeah.
And that's fine, if that's what you want to do, but then we've got to be prepared to communicate to people who apply and don't get the funding, because there are going to be times when we say no.
Sure.
Why, even though I'm expanding my festival, do you not want to support me? So as long as we have that will, that's fine. I just want to make sure we're clear on all that going ahead.
I almost think a lot of this discussion is, is unnecessary. We still haven't figured out if we're going to continue to fund this, this grant program. We're, we're talking about a few dollars.
I, I think that's the question for the next budget round, is, is, do we want to do this? We did it as a one-time funding. It seems to me it's been very successful so far. I, I would hope that in the next budget round, we, that will be on the table as something either to continue it for one time again, or to make it a permanent part of the budget. And, and that seems to me, you know, we've gained now almost, almost two years of experience working with this, so it seems to me, you know, one of the things in the retreat we could talk about is, where does this fit in our next budget discussion? And I think that's the policy that we have before us.
And, and I just foresee us having this discussion about how we evaluate programs that have come to us after we, again, after we have this, this further discussion as to how we create the fund, because I can see, you know, why don't we establish a committee in it, and I think maybe to add to this proposed, you know, shouldn't there be a member of council on there? I think so. Or maybe even some tourism professionals. Why not? And so I think there's, there's lots of questions that we can ask about the task force that's assembled to look at this, but then why don't we have this task force also look at all the tourism funding? You know, maybe, maybe if we spend $1.2 million today at CW and, and another $750 at the chamber, maybe, maybe those fall under the purview of this task force to evaluate programs. So I, I think we have a whole lot more discussion to do amongst council, and, and to your point about the work session, that might be the opportunity to do it, but for the purpose of what's remaining in this, what was $250,000, this seems adequate.
Well, and my question to you, Mr. Mayor, is, and I don't disagree with you that what we've done so far is, we feel has been successful, but how do we know that?
That, that's why this has criteria in it that asks for measures.
Yeah, you know, think about the Arts Commission. You know, the Arts Commission, we, is engaged to, to dole out funds for different programs, and, and maybe that's kind of where we're heading in, in some of this, in my mind, is, you know, how, maybe we have an arts, or a tourism commission that helps us understand where the opportunities are, and, and we rely on their experiences and...
Well, but, but you're, you're talking, I mean, scale here, you know, $50,000 to a symphony as opposed to hundreds of thousands.
Only, only relate that to, because here's where I think we're going to have a conflict as we go forward, and, and once we put more money into this program.
And one of the, one of the questions is, is this the role of city council?
At all.
Does city council want to hand it off to somebody else, which I think is a, an important policy discretion to have.
That's exactly my point, about, you know, relating this to the Arts Commission, you know, and, and the other millions of dollars that we spend on tourism promotion. I mean, there, there's just a big can of worms here, and so, again, for this purpose...
This is a small can of worms that, that we can deal with.
But it brings, brings up other discussion points, and, so...
Speaking of this memorandum.
Yes.
I think this council works well when we have discretion, and this builds that in there. Let folks come back and know that this, this fund is meant to help people expand and grow and create new things. It's not, it's not a continuing operational budget line item, so I'm comfortable with that as a council president.
And I, I think this is pretty clear of that's exactly the purpose, you know.
And, and, and thank you for bringing the discussion back. I mean, obviously, I objected last, two, two discussions about this because of the way it was written, and that staff would make the determination in consultation, and this kind of changes around where they make a recommendation, and then we can make the determination. So I'm comfortable with it.
May I ask council to make one slight amendment to this?
Okay.
In paragraph three at the end, by majority vote of council. So you know what the process is for approving it when we get to a decision point.
Sure.
So it's not a polling type?
That's right.
Which was it?
This is, this is your, your policy, but I would ask you to make that clarification.
Is everybody comfortable with that? Okay. Okay, with that, I'll take a motion. Do we need to approve this?
You can just approve it as, as amended.
Prove as, with, with a motion?
With that, yeah, it's hard to...
If someone would like to make a motion, would you?
Can I just say one thing? I know you get tired of me saying this, but I, I just feel like the, and if the, as long as the first paragraph is not part of it, because I just think that sentence that says Tourism Promotion Contingency Fund was created in FY15 to provide one-time funding to projects and activities.
What if we, what if we said the one-time Tourism Promotion Contingency Fund was created?
Then I feel more comfortable.
How about if we moved one time before the contingency fund rather than that? Because that's the real meaning of that.
Yeah, and that's, and that was what my initial question was.
I understand. Is, is that acceptable to everybody?
Well, then I would like to add, if we can really drive them...
Sorry.
To increase, I think that's what we're talking about, is increasing, and you mentioned that at staff meeting the other day. I'd rather be increased. There's just discussion at WADMEC today that says, well, WADMEC's not really designed to increase, it's only to drive, and we're splitting hairs, but if we're going to split hairs, let's, let's put an increase.
So it's the second bullet?
Yeah. Yeah. I have no problem with that.
Excellent.
Got all those changes?
Yeah.
Do we vote?
Or do we take a poll?
Please, sir.
Let's have a motion, and then we can vote and take a poll.
Mr. Mayor, I'm with you, approve the Tourism Promotion Contingency Funding Process as amended.
Second. Have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Jerry?
Mr. Newtonson. Mr. Pons. Mayor Holman. Vice Mayor Frye. Mr. Pons.
Next order of business is city attorney courts, and we have three.
Mr. Mayor, the first matter on the agenda is amendment that needs to be made to the city code. Since council has approved a special use permit, firing a firearm with a projectile is currently not permitted under the city code, and there are only limited exceptions when, limited exceptions to that. The current exception for Colonial Williamsburg allows the firing of firearms for, as part of the historical interpretation in the historic area without projectiles, and so we need to amend when firearms allow, are allowed to be fired under the circumstance. And so section 10-123 of the city code contains that exception. You have a proposed ordinance 1518 in front of you, which adds language to permit the firing range to actually shoot projectiles, and for that activity to be conducted in the museum support district. And so the staff recommendation is, having now approved of the special use permit, that council also approve 15-18.
Any, any questions from the city attorney? I'll, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that the council approve proposed ordinance 15-18.
Second. I have a motion a second. Would you call the roll, please, Jerry?
Ms. Newton. Mr. Pons. Mayor Holman. Vice Mayor Fryland.
I'm staying.
Mr. Foster.
Next is the hotel guest registry searches. This is proposed ordinance 15-19. Michelle.
The next two matters are ones that I mentioned last month when I went through changes adopted by the General Assembly and mentioned this toward the end of that presentation. Council recently amended the hotel regulations and in those amendments, we continued the inspection of the hotel guest registry as a requirement that was punishable as a class one misdemeanor if the hotel owner did not allow us to look at the registry as required. Since then, the decision was issued by the Supreme Court in City of Los Angeles versus Patel. And effectively, what that did was say that hotel guest registries, the owner of a hotel has privacy interest in the hotel guest registry, that hotels are not closely regulated industry that constitute an exception to the search and seizure requirements under the Constitution. And so, that means that we cannot criminalize an owner who does not allow us to look at the registry. That activity is not criminalized and that we have to get a warrant if the owner refuses consent. And so, I have done two things in the amendment that is before council today. I have moved the enforcement and inspections provision out of those areas, those provisions of the code that contain a misdemeanor penalty, and I have added language that mirrors the language in the fire code regarding obtaining warrants. So, if the owner does not give consent to look at the hotel guest registry, then the inspector who is going to look can go to the magistrate and obtain a warrant, provided there's probable cause that there's a criminal offense and that's evidence of the offense or there's a criminal, they're seeking evidence or it is evidence. And so, based on that, I would request that council adopt proposed ordinance 1519.
Any questions for the city attorney? I mean, I don't think we have a lot of questions.
Yeah, I just have a question, just what, I understand this better. Obtaining a warrant requires the authorized city official to have probable cause at a violation of the law. Is that a criminal law?
Yes.
So, if the issue in question is that occupants of, I mean, I think this dates goes back to the issue about the length of stay and what the registry can prove. Violation of length of stay is not a criminal offense, is it?
The code provides that the length of stay is for 30 days and it is included in the list of things for which a criminal misdemeanor, so the hotel owner can only allow someone to stay for 30 days.
So, violation of that is a misdemeanor offense?
Yes, yes.
That's what I didn't understand. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt proposed ordinance 15-19.
Second. I have a motion a second. Would you call the roll, please, Jerry?
Ms. Newton. Mr. Pons. Mayor Holman. Vice Mayor Fryland. Mr. Foster.
And the final city attorney report is real property tax exemption for spouses of military members killed in action.
This is, again, one that I mentioned last year, last month. This is the correction to the property tax exemption. Remember that when we talked about this last year, the exemption only applied if your property was valued at or less than the average assessed value of a single-family dwelling in your jurisdiction. So, if the average assessed value of a single-family dwelling in your jurisdiction is $250,000 and your property is worth $260,000, you are not entitled to any portion of the exemption. That is not what the constitutional amendment said when it was adopted in 2014 and approved by the voters, and so, now the General Assembly has gone back to correct that. So, now, if your property is worth $300,000 and the average assessed value of property, single-family detached, single-family dwelling in the city of Williamsburg is worth $240,000, you get a tax exemption up to $240,000 and you pay tax on the remaining $60,000. And so, what you have in front of you is proposed ordinance 1520, which makes those amendments to the city code to come into compliance with the state code and the requirements that were adopted by the General Assembly. There are some technical provisions in there as well regarding how proportional shares are calculated. This is not optional, council needs to adopt this.
Any questions?
Well, I mean, I think it's important and good that they fix this because the way the prior wording was set up, it made no sense whatsoever. I just, I'm probably silly to even say this, but I feel at some point, we should go back to our representatives in the General Assembly and say, "This is wonderful that you do this for the families or spouses of people killed in combat, but what does the state do? Why does the state choose to have the locality do something unless the state's stepping up in some way about which I'm unaware? Does the state not feel an obligation to these people who've made the same sacrifice?"
They're going to let us do it.
It's discouraging.
And then they'll take the glory.
Yes, right.
So, but I think it's good in a community like ours to be able to offer, you know...
Oh, sure, especially with all the, I mean, the significant military presence in the area. Mr. Mayor, I'll move that council adopt proposed ordinance 15-20 and then use section 18-58 of the city code to provide for real property tax exemption for surviving spouses and military members killed in action. Take it.
I have a motion a second. Call the roll, please, Jerry.
Ms. Newton. Mr. Pons. Mayor Holman. Vice Mayor Fryland. Mr. Foster.
Any unfinished business?
I just thought I'd mention that this is our week for ribbon cuttings. There's some other one this afternoon.
Three for today.
Yeah.
Any new business to come before council?
Apparently, three have come up this week. But you know, I think that's, but that's an important point that Ms. Newton makes because ribbon cuttings are a sign of economic activity and that's really important to this community.
Right.
It means something to every one of us. One thing I didn't mention when Chief Dent was speaking to us, I think it's easy to overlook, items like the purchase of that pumper are also important economic development tools because the businesses in this community and the ones who consider whether or not they want to locate here need to know that the community is 100% behind health, safety, and welfare and protection of private property. And I think keeping up a strong fleet makes an important statement.
Anything else? That brings us to our final agenda item of the day, which is open forum at time when anyone who wishes to address council on any matter may do so. If you'd like to address council, please come forward and state your name and address. Seeing none, I think that brings us to the end. Mr. Mayor, I'm with you, Jerry. Second. Have a motion to adjourn in a second. Would you call the roll, please, Jerry?
Ms. Newton. Mr. Pons. Mayor Holman. Vice Mayor Fryland. Mr. Foster.
And the final...